Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, September 9th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. This morning, we have a pre-agenda appointment interview for Bill Number 615. Resolution Appointing Ms. Rosa Maria Cristello as a member of the Board of Directors for the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for a term to expire January 5th, 2025. Bill Number 616. Resolution Appointing Ms. BJ Lieber as a member of the Board of Directors for the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for a term to expire January 1st, 2023. Bill Number 617. Resolution Appointing Dr. Audrey Morell as a member of the Board of Directors for the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for a term to expire December 31st, 2023. And Bill Number 663. Resolution Appointing Mr. Chaz Kellum to serve as a Commissioner for the City of Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations for a term to expire August 30th, 2024. Now, we have introduction of papers for discussion. Finance and Law Committee, Mr. LeVell is the Chair. We have Bill Number 659. Resolution Amending Resolution 401 of 2017, which authorizes the Mayor and the Director of Finance to enter into a professional services agreement with CHR Catering Company for the purposes of providing the city with beverage and snack food vending services through vending machines. Public Safety Services Committee, Mr. O'Connor is the Chair. We have Bill Number 647. Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title 1, Administrative, Article 3, Organization, Chapter 116, Department of Public Safety to regulate the use of facial recognition and predictive policing technology. This bill is sponsored by Councilwoman Cori O'Connor. Public Works Committee, Mr. Coghill is the Chair. We have Bill Number 656. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Works to enter into an agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and Studio ZWAD for the professional landscape architectural services for Homewood Park infrastructure upgrades, cost not to exceed $1,630,014. Bill Number 657. Resolution Granting unto Roberts J. Lewis, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense, a new projecting sign to the front of the existing building at 1344 Fifth Avenue, First Ward, Sixth Council District. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wilson is the Chair. We have Bill Number 662. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of City Planning to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Natural Resource Defense Council in support of the Food Matters Regional Initiative. This study will be at no cost to the city. Innovation Performance and Asset Management Committee, Ms. Strausberger is the Chair. We have Bill Number 660. Resolution Amending Resolution 642 of 2017, which authorized the Mayor and the Director of Finance to enter into an agreement with RT Lawrence Corporation for the provision of a remittance processing system. Bill Number 661. Resolution Amending Resolution 738 of 2019, which provided for a professional services agreement with NCR Corporation to provide citywide credit, debit, and e-check payment services for the collection of various programs and permitting fees for the City of Pittsburgh by exercising the option to extend the term of the agreement for one year at no additional cost and updating the name of the vendor. Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Ms. Gross is the Chair. We have Bill Number 299. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Works to enter into a project cooperation agreement or professional services agreement with grounded strategies for the purposes of implementing a city farms pilot project, cost not to exceed $45,000. Councilwoman Deb Gross and Councilman Anthony Coghill are the sponsors of this legislation. We have Bill Number 658. Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for a Safe Place to Stay Project while we involve interior and exterior renovations to the existing eight-story building located at 326 Third Avenue into office space on floors 1 through 6 and a rooming house on floors 7 and 8 for a Safe Place to Stay program. The address is 326 Third Avenue in the First Ward, City of Pittsburgh. That concludes the reading of the legislation up for preliminary approval. Thank you and have a great day.
So, good morning and welcome to the pre-agenda for Wednesday, September 9th, 2020. We have four appointments today for consideration. We have with us Ms. Rosa Maria Cristello to the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority. We have BJ Lieber to the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority. And we have Dr. Audrey Morell to the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority. And we also have with us Chaz Kellum to the Commission on Human Relations. I'm currently joined by Councilwoman Erica Strausberger and others may join as we begin. What I would ask is, in the order that I called you, if you would just please give us your name, a little bit of background information on you, and then we'll be able to proceed forward. We'll start with Ms. Cristello.
Yes, yes, that's correct. What was that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I need the clerk to read the bill first. I apologize.
Bill 615. Resolution Appointing Ms. Rosa Maria Cristello as a member of the Board of Directors for the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for a term to expire January 5th, 2025. Can we read them all?
Yes, please.
Bill 616. Resolution Appointing Mrs. BJ Lieber as a member of the Board of Directors for the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for a term to expire January 1st, 2023. Bill Number 617. Resolution Appointing Dr. Audrey Morell as a member of the Board of Directors for the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for a term to expire December 31st, 2023. Bill Number 663. Resolution Appointing Mr. Chaz Kellum to serve as a Commissioner for the City of Pittsburgh's Commission on Human Relations for a term to expire August 30th, 2024.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Cristello, you can begin.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. I'm Rosa Maria Cristello. I live in the beautiful neighborhood of Regent Square, the Pittsburgh side. As many of you know, Regent Square is divided into like four different places, but it's, I live right on the Pittsburgh face and I love it. I am currently the founder and executive director of the Latino Community Center here in Pittsburgh. Lived here since 2011. Came to Pittsburgh for graduate school at the University of Pittsburgh. Graduated from a master's degree in Gispien. So, I'm happy to be here today. I'm not sure what else you would like me to share, or if that's...
That's plenty.
Okay.
Ms. Lieber?
Hi, good morning, everybody. I'm BJ Lieber. I'm the President and CEO of Adagio Health. Hopefully, you know about us. If you don't, very broadly, we are a healthcare provider throughout the state of Pennsylvania with a focus in Western Pennsylvania headquartered in downtown Pittsburgh. And we provide health and wellness services primarily to women and primarily to women who are underserved, either with no insurance or insurance that makes it impractical for them to access their healthcare. So, we are all about access and equity. And I'm really proud of our team. They've done a great job through the pandemic. Prior to Adagio Health, I was at the West Penn Hospital Foundation and WQED. So, I have a career in nonprofit and community work. And I was most recently the Chair of the Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority appointed by the Governor. And we went out of business, which was exactly what we were supposed to do a few years ago. So, I relished this opportunity to jump back in, to help the city.
Thank you very much. For the record, we are also joined by Madam President Teresa Kael Smith. Ms. Morell?
Morning, Audrey Morell. I'm a professor at the University of Pittsburgh. I'm actually a psychologist by training, but I have an appointment in the top-ranked School of Business at Pitt, where I've been serving some leadership roles, including a previous role as a Director of the Ethics and Leadership Center and Head of the Undergraduate Business Program. Until a year ago, I stepped into the role of Acting Dean of the University Honors College. I live on the north side of Pittsburgh in Manchester and have been involved and led a number of nonprofit boards as Chair throughout the history of Pittsburgh, which I moved here in 1987. So, people tell me that makes me an official Pittsburgh, not only a member of the community, but a member of the family. And I do a lot of work on the interface between issues related to diversity, inclusion, and social responsibility, both in terms of individual development and organizational best practice, and look forward to bringing that expertise to the board.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Kellum?
Good morning, everyone. It's good to see so many friendly faces and folks that I know. So, good morning. Chaz Kellum, my service Director for the Office of Pittserves at the University of Pittsburgh. Seems like we have a Pitt theme going here this morning. The Office of Pittserves provides meaningful and ethical service experiences to University of Pittsburgh students, a role which I've been in for about two years. I'm honored to serve in that role. My background is in diversity, inclusion, and equity. As I've had multiple roles before that in that area in some way, all focused on community. The thing that has all my work together over the course of my career has been community development and just community work overall, activism and so forth. Threw up the opportunity to join back on the Human Relations Commission. I previously was a member some time ago. I'm looking forward at the opportunity to join back. I live in the 31st Ward of the city and I'm excited to give and support the city in this role if given the opportunity. So, thanks for having me. Glad to be here.
Thank you all. Is there any comments or questions that members may have? President Smith? You're on mute.
I apologize. Are these the appointments for, all for PWSA?
Three are for PWSA. Mr. Kellum is for the Commission on Human Relations.
And could any of you tell me, or any of you from southwest of the City of Pittsburgh?
I don't believe so.
No, no one is from southwest of Pittsburgh. And our person on there is Councilwoman Strausberger. Is she on here?
Yes, she is.
I'm just curious if there's anybody on PWSA board from southwest of the City of Pittsburgh, if you know of.
I unfortunately don't know where all of my fellow members of the board live.
I'm pretty sure I've looked at them before and there was none from our side of town. And then when you mentioned that there's a Pitt theme going on, I think we often go to the universities, which are great for a lot of information, but I also think that we need people from the City of Pittsburgh that are everyday residents involved in some of these things. I think this is what people have been actually protesting, saying that they don't feel like they have a voice in a lot of things, that we seem to get people with, you know, that are supposedly experts in certain areas. But, and not to say that we don't appreciate all of you for your willingness to participate, but for me, I'd like to see the everyday person also represented on some of these boards and authorities. And I do think that this administration has probably bought the most diverse group of people ever on a board or authority, on any of the boards or authorities that I've ever seen. So, I don't want to say that this is them, but I do think that we don't... I think that there needs to be a criteria that we set, that you have to have a diverse background in terms of geographical diversity, economic diversity. I think that there should be diversity in a lot of different ways. And I don't think that we necessarily reach that. And so, and I'll be honest, I would like to know what you think, any of you. If you could just tell me what you think you'll be able to contribute to the board for PWSA. That's the one I'm most interested in. It's the one I have most concerns with. So, if you could talk to me about that a little bit, each of you. Do you want me to say who we should start with?
Start. Hi, this is BJ. I'm not sure if you caught my introduction, BJ Lieber. I run Adagio Health, which is a nonprofit healthcare organization. I hope that I bring to the board a lot of experience serving the community, both in terms of a brief stint in the Mayor's office, but more importantly, a much longer stint chairing a variety of boards and organizations around town, including the ICA, which was a great opportunity. So, extensive experience in the community. Have lived in Pittsburgh since college, really committed to the city. And I'm a Highland Park resident. It's a great neighborhood, a big belief in the neighborhoods. Have always lived in the city since we have been in Pittsburgh. So, at the risk of sounding immodest, I've got a lot of experience and I've done a lot of really good work having an impact in the city and surrounding areas. And I really look forward to the opportunity to bringing that to the table. I know that I, we all have a lot to learn. I've done some homework over the last couple of days and it's a complex organization and has a lot of moving parts. But I think we can all get up to speed quickly and start to make a difference.
Anyone can go next.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I'll jump in, Audrey. So, I guess what I would like to bring is, you know, I'm new to this. I will be completely lying if I was to tell you that I always dreamed of sitting on the board of P... That's not the case. I come to it very much as learning. And the way I approach a lot of this, similar to when I first moved to Pittsburgh. You know, I've learned a lot while I've been in Pittsburgh. And a lot of what I learn, I then teach back to my community, to the Latino community that has been growing here, right? So, the way I've had to interpret what I learn is in different ways, like the way that my community learns. And one obviously is language, right? Interpreting from English to Spanish and ensuring that whatever system I'm learning about in Pittsburgh, I'm able to then teach and help others understand that system. So, that's the way I kind of view what this appointment here is. PWSA, I've also done a little bit of research and trying to understand the system as a whole. I can't tell you that I get it at all. The minutes were, you know, I'm gonna, it's gonna take some time for me to learn it. And so, what I hope to bring is just kind of, I will be the person asking questions. I will be the person that raises my hand and says, "I'm sorry, I don't really understand this." But the goal is, if I'm gonna be here, I really want to understand it and I want to educate then others that need to know about this. When we first started this conversation, I remember coming home and there was a notice about the PWSA doing something in my street. And it was when I first started to kind of open my eyes to this and saw like, "But this is in English, right? So, how are other people supposed to understand what's in this brochure?" and so on. And so, that's definitely the lens that I'm coming to this with. And, you know, I hope that that's needed. I understand completely where you're coming from. So, you know, obviously, this is your decision. If I can be of service, I will be. If you think there's someone else that can do this, you know, by all means, feelings are not hurt on this end.
Let me just say, first of all, do you work at the Latino Community Center?
Yes.
My sister helped start that, Roseanne Jaworski. But anyway, so I would just say that I have not voted for the past few PWSA board appointees. And it's not, has nothing to do with the people in general. I mean, some of the most amazing people, they're appointing to some of these boards, but mostly because I just have a lot of concerns with PWSA. And actually, today I got tagged in a bunch of Facebook comments where people are saying that they got a bill from, I think, 15 or 17 years ago, something, and they want people to pay this bill and they're astronomical bills. And apparently, a lot of bills went out. And I'm sure Councilwoman Strausberger knows more about that, but I'm going to ask her to look into that. I just want to know how those kinds of things are not. And I think that you'll be a voice for that and I hope that you'll be a voice for that, that kind of stuff. I want to make sure the people have a voice on there. I love the idea of making sure that there's a lot of people with a lot of talent. And obviously, the administration picked a lot of great people. And you're all seem very impressive. But for me, it's the everyday person who struggles to pay that bill that needs to be on that board. And we have a lot of those right now with PWSA. It's the person who's worried about lead in their water that needs to be on those boards. At least one voice, somebody who's going to question things, somebody who's going to challenge the status quo. And not to cause trouble, not to, you know, turn a board upside down, but to get results for the residents and for the great payers. That's what I want. And I've just really been very critical of a lot of the boards and authorities since I've been here. Matter of fact, I won't even serve on most of them. I took my name off of some of them. And now, as Council President, you get appointed to certain things just because of the position. But I got to be honest, there's even some that I'm on now that I'm gonna take my name off because I really want, I don't like flop. I don't like making something just look great. I want to make something have great results for the people. And so, with that said, I'm just gonna say, I've not voted for this. I'm gonna think about this a lot. I'm sure you'll be approved anyway. All of you will probably be approved because I'm sure my call...
Can I weigh in before we move on? I don't...
Yeah, I'm gonna talk, get to you in one second. I'm sorry. I think that a lot of my colleagues really know you personally or know of you or know of your work and probably are very impressed with you as well. So, I don't anticipate that you wouldn't be approved. I'm just saying, every time we have appointees, I'm gonna bring up the fact that we need everyday people on some of these things too. Not to run the entire board, but at least to be a voice on there. And I'm sure some of you are everyday people or know the people that are struggling and working in the communities that need help. So, I do want to say that, I'm not saying that you're out of touch with any of that. I'm just saying, I'd just like to know that we have that voice on there. And I do think Erica Strausberger, our Councilwoman, does a great job too. Which I think that she's always willing to look deeper when we have an issue. So, I do appreciate all that. I just think it means something to the public to see them on a board, to see their face on a board. Okay, I'm sorry, Audrey. Thank you.
No, I was gonna just chime in to say, I absolutely agree with you. And I want to say that the University of Pittsburgh is where I work. The City of Pittsburgh is my home. And that was very intentional. When I was looking to buy a house, I wanted to stay in the city. I picked the north side because I wanted to walk out the door and be able to have neighbors and friends that I could interact with in a normal life. It's where I led a Girl Scout troop. It's where I worship. It's where my book club is. And so, it is interesting to me. I kind of consider myself to be pretty average, you know, except for the fact that in Oakland, they might call me Professor Morell. Just depends on whether or not grades are due at that particular week. But I do have a passion for understanding two things. One, how we make sure that we equalize the playing field for people to live a life that is enjoyable and healthy. And water and water sustainability is absolutely essential to that. A lot of people talk about data is the new oil. I always say, nope, it's not. It's water. And so, this is not just any commission for me. It is one that is life-sustaining. And the decisions that are made and what comes before this board are absolutely essential. And they not only affect me, they don't affect the city. They affect all the friends and the people who I'm so attached to in the city. And I think that that's exactly the perspective that I bring. In addition, on the work side of what I do, we're really launching this whole initiative to get Pitt students more interested in channeling their passion about issues related to climate to understand the impact of water sustainability. So, I'm hoping that sitting on this board will help me to be able to inspire students to really get involved in community-based research to be able to help make this whole situation better, not only now, but in the future. So, I see the two sides of me coming together on this board. The side of me that lives on the north side and pays attention to the water bill and talks to my neighbors and my church members when they can't pay the water bill and standing in the classroom trying to motivate students to be able to do community-based research that has an impact. So, I'm excited.
I'm excited for all of you. Honestly, if I vote this time, it'll be the first time I've done since... I don't know if you know the history with the PWSA stuff, but it was, actually came about with residents in my district. Actually, the residents in not this district, but they thought they lived in my district. And they came to me and they bought their bills and we started uncovering the problems with the bills. Then we started uncovering the problems with the meters. Then it was the lead in the water. And I just thought, God, please stop sending me more things to uncover because it was really getting daunting and it was overwhelming because there was just so much that needed done. And the Women's Caucus started asking for investigations and started looking into it. So, I'm so keenly aware because those residents are constantly watching and asking, "We have what's happening with PWSA?" They want to know that things are really changed, not just great PR. And I am happy to say that the Director now lives in my district in Mount Washington. But I still want to say that even with him at the very top, and I think he's doing a good job, I do think that I want to have people on the board overseeing his work as well, that are local residents, that are everyday people. I'd just like to see a little bit of diversity in terms of, you know, education, economics, geographic, things that maybe we haven't thought of, just so people see themselves. But I do want to thank you all. You sound so impressive. And it sounds like you have your finger on the pulse of the community. And that's important. That's so important to me. So, this is my thank you. Thank you all for your willingness to serve.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please look into those bills, please. I just want to say that.
Thank you. Anything from any other members?
Councilwoman Strausberger? Oh, I'm sorry. Who? I didn't, I'm sorry to tell you. I'm not trying to jump in front of Councilwoman...
Yeah, I was just gonna ask a few questions. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. I just didn't know who had gone yet. I apologize for being late. And so, I'll be eager to hear your questions. Sorry.
Okay, so I'd like actually to start with Mr. Kellum because you haven't gotten a chance to speak yet. If you could, if you could just tell us, I mean, the Commission on Human Relations is already doing so much. I mean, they've expanded the number of protected classes in the last several years through many different bills through council. They're working every day to get out into the community, to inform people that they exist. You know, what do you think you will bring? What do you think that the CHR can do even better?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. So, I'm really excited about the opportunity to bring diversity, inclusion, and equity, my experiences, my education, and my just perspective to that group. I identify as a black man that has a disability. And I'm excited to bring both of those perspectives and those lenses to the work. And I'm really looking forward to adding some valuable insight and resources and tools to the group. I think we have a work cut out ahead of us, meaning that just informing and educating city residents about the Commission, making sure that we are feet on the ground in communities, in spaces that matter. And we continue to use the resources that are available to us in the nonprofit sector of Pittsburgh and the government side of Pittsburgh to really just enhance the opportunities and access for Pittsburgh residents. So, I have seen firsthand the change and evolution in the Commission as a member under past leadership. I have seen the evolution and the growth and the great work of the new leadership. So, I'm excited to work in and with that new leadership. And I think I want to echo with what Audrey said about, you know, I'm a Pittsburgher. I'm with the Pittsburgh Public Schools. I mean, I love this town. I know that sounds super corny and cliche to say, being that we're all together. But I really mean that. I mean, this is, I grew up here. I lived here. All my professional career has been here. Pitt is the place that I work, folks. It's not who I am.
It's not who I am, right? And um while I love Pitt and I and I'm thankful for the opportunity to do the work, it's it's only a small fraction of who I am. Um, every day I wake up as a black man, every day when I wake up, I have to roll over and get into my wheelchair and engage the world from that perspective. Every day I'm faced with many of the same challenges as many of our residents are in the city. Um, and I want to, I want to contribute. I want to leave it better than I found it, right? For the next generation and generations to come after me. So I'm excited to do that work. I'm excited to get my hands dirty in the work and do the hard stuff.
I want to thank you for your willingness to serve and the time and effort that you will put into this commission. So thank you. For the other, um, for the other three, I'll just say that I would welcome you on the board with me. Um, as a relative newcomer myself, as the newest member of the board, I. And even having worked for city government for six years, I'm still continuing to learn about P W S A. So having you ask those questions along with me will be very welcome. You know, P W S A, I think we all on the board recognize that if it's the kind of utility. It, water is kind of the kind of utility that we should all have access to, but you should not have to think about. You should, people should basically not have to know that P W S A exists if it's doing its job right because. It delivers clean, fresh water that people, that customers can depend on. And that's about it. Maybe they'll disrupt your street once in a while, but that should be, you know, kind of the way it goes. And that hasn't been the case. I mean, council members um four years ago got more cases sent to them related to P W S A than basically any other concern. It was about lead, it was about billing, it was about this or that. There were so many concerns. And I think we are under, you know, the previous director and the current director were riding the ship, but it's a big ship to turn around. So, you know, we have a work cut out for us. We have um, you know, uh, revenue shortfalls that we're facing because of the pandemic. Because states and cities and the federal government are facing revenue shortfalls. But at the same time, still continuing to commit to addressing lead by twenty twenty-six and replacing every single lead service line by then. While also making sure that we're sensitive to people who are unable to pay their bills because, you know, fifty percent of people are out of work or have lost wages, right? Um, so we've extended the moratorium on shut offs um that continue now because. Um, because of that sensitivity, but you know, balancing that with the fact that we have all these major infrastructure projects that we're working to. To do, to accomplish because of deferred maintenance over the last fifty years and projects that were kicked down the road. So um and that on top of climate change, which is going to make our our landslides and our storm events and flooding basements that more. Prevalent and real for everybody. So I just want to open it up to you three. Whoever wants to talk about really any of those challenges and your perspective on them and kind of what you think you, you know, what you bring to those those challenges.
Well, you know, one of the things that I do in addition to uh on the research side is I work a lot with organizations about organizational leadership. Um, social responsibility in organizations, understanding how to make them more efficient. And and so it is one of the things that I do is to sort of get in and 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 figure out how can we um balance. Um, making sure that the organization is financially solvent at the same time that it's doing something that is causing no harm. You know, to the, to the, to the community that it's supposed to serve. And so um I think one of the things that I do bring is that perspective, having done that work, both from the academic side, but more from the practice side. So looking at ways to be able to diagnose what's going on from an organization and a leadership standpoint and a finance standpoint. Is is something that I think I can contribute in addition to just my fundamental passion about issues related to sustainability and climate.
Yeah, I think Erica, I would echo that in regards to, you know, the importance of water and something that none of us should have to think about. You know, there are other things in life that we need to spend our time and energy on. Um, and my, I think my experience at Adagio Health is probably a a parallel track in terms of healthcare. Um, you know, people just should not have to to work so hard and often unsuccessfully to have access to good quality healthcare. And so that's, that's the mission. I mean, from from day one, um, I think a focus on the the mission, which is so clear um in the the P W S A case. And then in terms of organizational impact, um, I'm really proud to say that um I just in September started my sixth year at Adagio Health. And when I started, we were considerably in debt and in the process of downsizing the organization. And we have now turned it around so that we are financially healthy and growing. And so it's that combination of mission and then having good management, a good board oversight and good support in place to help move it forward. Um, to something that's so important to our community. So I I really look forward to that. Hope I can contribute.
Yeah, and for me. I I I agree with everything you said. I don't think people need to think about this. And and again, I'm going to go back to like, I I want to learn more about this before I I can fully give my, this is how I'm going to contribute. Because I think for me, I need to understand it. I need to to learn it a little bit more. Um, one thing I I I did not say here, um, my my background is from I U P. I I got a degree in environmental regional planning. And so um now that was over a decade ago, but um, you know, it. I'm gonna have to dust off my books and 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 just reach back out to um to the great team there to help me understand all this as well. Um, so I do have the the background on that that I do want to bring back to this. And yeah, again, just. I think that we're all, anyone who's running an organization right now is going through this. There's so many different things that are changing and um, you know, us at the L C C, like, there's. There, there's a lot of things that have shifted and then, so you have to have that flexibility, you have to have that, that, that mind that's looking at the whole piece. And if you move this, then how's it gonna affect this? But then there's a lot of, there's like twenty of these things. And so um, you know, I I'm hoping to bring that mentality as well. Like, this is what I do every single day is thinking through cause and effect. And 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 how are we just going to push forward and 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 make sure that we all get it? I mean, we're in a pandemic, right? So like, how are we going to get through this? As a team? And so there's, there's a lot of that mentality and way of thinking that I I hope to bring um to the board. But I'm gonna go back to, I I need to learn. I I I want to learn more about about the overall picture to see how best I I can support.
Thank you. I thank you all for your willingness to serve, all of you. Um, I think you'll find that the P W S A board members that are currently there are, they really take it seriously. They ask tough questions and the staff are ready for those tough questions. So I I hope that you will bring that. It sounds like you will bring that with you. Um, and not only to learn, but to challenge it to be a better organization for everybody. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Thank you for being here. It's good to see you. Hi, BJ.
Hi, Jim.
Good to see you. Um, so I am um struggling to still open your resumes on my computer. I've been going back and forth with the clerk while we're talking, so I apologize. That um it's not working on my screen. We all are struggling with technology these days. Um, and I just wanted to recap, I think, um, some of the things that the other council members. Touched upon because we all kind of lived through it together on the council side. Uh, but you'll remember that I also served on the board from twenty fourteen through twenty nineteen. So I I had um both hats on through all of these bumps that we've been through. And the kind of organizational, really, it's been an organizational turnaround um so far. And so um we're all, I think, all collectively happy to be here instead of where we were five years ago. Uh, when things started falling apart. Uh, and I wanted to frame that a little bit. It was my experience when I first joined the board that. We couldn't get our questions answered as board members. Uh, we couldn't get our questions answered as council members. Uh, and we couldn't give straight answers to our constituents. Um, and that was in part, I believe, um, in my personal experience because of the private. Public partnership that the city had with Veolia Corporation. Um, right? So P W S A had given over its operations to the largest water corporation on the planet. Um, and Veolia Corporation wasn't, was in control of the organization and had all the top of the organizational turret as. Direct employees. And it took a long time and a lot of strength. Um, I really want to give credit to the board members that were on that board at that time. Uh, we were all brand new, um, except for our city treasurer, Margaret Lanier. And so we had a lot of learning to do certainly, but there was deep experience and there were several attorneys on the board. And we were able to sever that relationship with Veolia. We were able to get rid of those employees. Uh, we were able to change the top of the org chart. We sued them uh for the damage that they did to our direct water system, uh ruining the billing system firstly, right? Which was the first thing that Councilwoman Smith um said that she uh heard from for her constituents. And I distinctly remember the day when she brought those concerns to me as a board member and I said to her. You know, I am not getting those calls in my council office. And believe me, we certainly weren't hearing them from the Veolia corporate leadership that as board members. Um, so I, we were bringing those complaints to the the leadership. But then soon, very soon, my phone and my council office started ringing soon. And I could see, having a bit of a background and and data from the early dinosaur years of data. Uh, in the eighties and nineties, that these failures were rolling out geographically around the city in terms of the billing structure, the billing system. It was literally their technology was terrible. Um, and so we had, that was a long road to fix. And then we soon entered um the terrible national tragedy of watching Flint Water System go through its troubled blood. Um, and then we directly pressed the Veolia leadership, whether or not we had lead trouble. We were told our water was great, it was perfect. Uh, but within days, they admitted that they were under notice. We were under, we were under notice as a board from D E P. Um, and we we pressed and pressed to take really quick action, really having learned. Um, through the terrible tragedy that we had, well, watched the previous year. Uh, the Flint Water System, of which Veolia was also in control of. So remember that. It was also Veolia in control of the water system in Flint, Michigan at the same time. Um, and, you know, we didn't have the the firepower to continue a lawsuit against the biggest water multinational on the planet. Um, and we settled pretty quickly. And then we, and we started writing that wrong, right? We immediately, I think it was um. Uh, it was in February of twenty seventeen, so it's over three years ago now that I had a press conference and I said, let's just buy water filters for everybody immediately. Because like every legacy city really on the planet, including, you know, old cities in Europe and old cities in the U S. We didn't know which houses had a lead line connection to the system. Um, nobody had kept track over the hundred years. So we immediately began looking and you could see we still go out and um look for those connections and put them up. You can go to the P W S A website. If you're listening for the public, go to P G H two O and you can see the live map that we put up. Um, by, I think later that year, we had it up maybe the early the next spring. So that as we found the lines, you could look and see whether your house had one of those lead connections. Um, the state wouldn't let us replace the whole line at someone's house. I mean, we pushed as a board. Um, it was a bit of a, you know, we didn't have consensus the whole time, but we got there pretty quick enough to say that we should be replacing. Entire lines and not half of your line, which really makes you more vulnerable to lead contamination. And voted as a board to defy the state because the state was ordering us to just do half line replacements. Which is really scary for people, right? So imagine you have lead all the way from the water main in the street into your basement. But the state statewide was ordering water systems to just do half, just the public side under the street. Which causes, you know, vibrations and can shake the hundred-year-old lead lines, literally shake pieces free. Um, into your, into your private side. Um, and so we defied the state and um did a year of arm wrestling. And with the state um senators' help, especially, I want to mention Wayne Fontana and Jay Costa was also very happy, helpful, changed state law. So that as an authority, we were allowed to cross over that personal property boundary and do full line replacements. And I think that the count now, I've forgotten, Councilwoman Strasberg here, I think is over eight thousand citywide. And that's why we're going to be able to close in on doing, really having replaced them citywide by twenty twenty-six. So there won't be lead. Um, there still are situations. And I also want to add that as a board. And I I I want to impress finding out how important I think this is for us as city council and for all of our authorities. That we always, even in these emergency situations and huge lifts, like the the prospect of spending hundreds of millions of dollars. Still foregrounded equity in our decision-making. So it was really a public health issue that we start. Um, those replacements where there was the highest density of children under the age of six especially, right? So we used the best census data we had at the time. But also in the low and moderate income neighborhoods. Because those are people who are not going to have the the fifty thousand dollars, anywhere from five thousand to fifty thousand dollars to go out and go ahead and replace their own line. Um, and you'll see, if you look at the map of where those replacements have happened to date, uh, that we really prioritize the minority and low and moderate income neighborhoods. And I think it's really important that we always think of that. And here at the city council table, I often say. You know, rebuilding the city isn't just above ground, right? So all of the same issues we deal with on gentrification versus reinvestment. Who's benefiting and who's paying for this kind of city reconstruction? It's also relevant to what's happening underground. Whether we're working on stormwater issues, whether we're working on infrastructure issues like water and sewer mains, right? Um, and whether we're working on things like billing, right? And so it's also, I think, a struggle that's in front of you now with the P U C is how our revenues at P W S A are structured. Um, in the last round of rates, they kind of um reduced the difference between what an individual household pays as a rate. And what like the big institutions, like our big multi-billion dollar hospitals pay as a rate. Um, there was a time when that, those rates were a little farther apart because they're different rate classes. So literally, there's a higher price per gallon of water, if you will, thousand gallons of water. Uh, for for different rate classes. Um, and I think those rates should stay farther apart, right? Because they are the bigger demands on our system. There was a time when we had like giant steel mills on this river's edge that um used massive amounts of water. And um really helped defray the costs to individuals, just like our our property taxes were structured. Um, and I think it's only fair that they, those bigger institutions also um help carry that cost. Because they are a bigger demand on the system. And it's, it's gonna be a very um interesting conversation, I think, for you all on P U C as you move forward and trying to make it. Fair and just and equitable and not just, fair doesn't mean necessarily sane in my mind. So I think that's going to be an interesting discussion for you all as you move forward on on who pays for the system. Right, where's the capacity to pay? I think is the better question. And definition of fair. Um, just kind of a parallel discussion like we have about, you know, who should pay a tax burden. Right, so um I want to kind of share that with you. Um, and I think in all of these things, um, when we're talking about. What I think is the downside of privatization, which I've already kind of framed for you, um, is still a threat. Um, I'm glad to hear Dr. Murrell, is that how you say your name, say that uh in your mind, water is the new oil. Um, I couldn't agree more, right? And so the profiteers will be trying to get uh and make profit off of our resource, which is water. Um, there are a lot of places in our country and and around the world that don't have as plentiful uh water as we do here. And um I, the lions are at the gate, if that's the right metaphor. Um, and certainly have been um trying their best to uh make themselves a part of. Um, this system. Um, and I, if I urge you to resist it, and I will uh continue to say that as as a representative for city. continue to say that as, as a representative for city, on city council. But let's also talk about how I think what in the, in the crises that we've had to deal with and turned that around, we also had to rebuild the organization. Because that was the other way that Viola had saved money. Is that they had decimated the capacities within the organization. And I'm really happy to see those capacities be back. The executive team is really strong, right? We, we made some really great hires. Stole a bunch of really good people from city government. In fact, we have people from the budget office, people from the finance office. Who are really a great team together. And I'm really excited to see them working together. But in a way, PWSA, well, we have engineering plans, we have infrastructure plans that we had to file with the PUC. We have the tariff plans, we've got, you know, compliance plans, but in a way there really isn't a business plan. And I wanted to say, especially, I think I heard you mention BJ and you're talking about kind of organizational change. That is an interesting. It's just been on my mind, right? That in a way, you know, what kind of is the business path? It's also about public service and providing this public good and how you kind of balance those two things, right? So that we don't, you know, we, we saw firsthand how I think in allowing Viola to kind of make off with about $10 million before things were all said and done, how just treating an authority like a business and extracting profit out caused actual harm. But on the other hand, you have to, to look ahead at the kind of, you know, revenue and expenditure structure, but also about kind of what is your market, right? It's not big steel mills on the river's edge anymore. So where are the kind of needs, but also opportunities? And I, I used to joke while on the board, but it's also true that the city is not just residential users. In my council district alone, there is at least 30 libation companies. I call them libations because there's something like 15 breweries, a cidery. I think three wineries. A whiskey distillery and a rum distillery. And it may also be a locket story, but I'm not sure if that's just distribution. I still have to follow up. So you see what I mean? There, there are actually kind of different kinds of users and consumers. And that means the system physically needs different needs, but it isn't just engineering. There also is a kind of organizational opportunity as well. So I haven't asked any questions. Does anybody have any response to my grandstanding here?
I'm moving to your neighborhood with all of the libation places over there.
They're within walking distance. Honestly, we really need to publish a map. You know, you could be, there are some of them are only like a block apart from each other, honestly. Yeah. So, but like, I think that's kind of what I want to emphasize. And I would really, I'd really be eager to hear any reactions to especially our changing. I think that this kind of competing opportunities that we have for reinvesting in people and neighborhoods. On top of an intersecting with kind of collapsing infrastructure that needs to be replaced, but will be on your shoulders to prioritize.
Well, you know, I, I often remind people that when we talk about sustainability, we forget there are three pieces to it. It's not just environmental sustainability. It's economic sustainability. So you have to pay attention to the fact of the viability of, of the organization to be able to continue to do its business and do well. But there's also social sustainability, which we tend to forget, which is about people and neighborhoods and communities. And, and what makes them not only survive but thrive. And so if we don't, if we don't balance across those, those three entities, then everybody loses. And we all lose big. And so I think that you did such an amazing job at laying out the history and the, and the different challenges, the ones that were faced and the ones that are coming. That, that having those conversations about how, how to be able to move forward while understanding those tensions is, is, is a conversation I look forward to participating in because it is, it is necessary for our collective wellbeing, which is a core passion to me. Again, this is not just about my, my needs as an individual living in the city, but it's also about my friends and my community and it's our collective responsibility. So, so thank you for that history because it was really very helpful.
Yeah, Deb, I liked your comments about Viola running it as a business and it's a public service. I mean, to me, it's with all due respect to those in business, if you're running a business, it's relatively easy because you have one goal and that's the bottom line. But I think there's an elegance about public service and nonprofit work where you're balancing the needs of the community with the needs to, to run a tight ship. And it seems like PWSA has made tremendous progress in that area over the last couple of years. So it sounds like it's incumbent on all of us to keep that momentum going.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I'll just, I mean, I'll add to that and just say, when I, when I heard you speaking, I wrote down your name and I said, connect with her. I think there's, there's nothing more valuable than connecting with someone who's already gone through it. And I'd love to continue to learn how you guys work together. You know, exactly what you were sharing, but a little bit more in depth. So yeah, I'll be reaching out to you just to learn more about the history. I mean, that's really so important to understand and then move forward.
Wonderful. Thank you. There's still lots of work to be done. There's still lots of work to be done. So be prepared for that as well. There were definitely stretches where I spent half my work week on, on just PWSA. But hopefully that won't be every week. Because there have been, yeah, there's sometimes heavy lifts because it's a, it's critical, right? We all know that it's critical to our daily lives. It's critical to the city's future. And I think there are going to be difficult decisions for you to make, but the opportunity to know that, as I think Dr. Merle said, to really create not just, I think, greater sustainability, but really grow in the wellness, right? In a way of really rebuilding the strength, I don't even say wealth of for actual citizens in the city. Instead of it being a negative and a drain on our city and our, in our, our actual like individual household wealth. So it's, it's big, it's a big responsibility, but this big opportunity as well. Thank you for all, for your willingness to serve. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other members who want to chime in? Seeing none. One, I just want to thank you all. I'm familiar with all of your work except for Mr. Miss Cristello, excuse me. Although I'm familiar with your organization. And I do think that what I know of all of you, you absolutely are looking out for the common man, for those most in need, for those under the most pressure within our city. So I thank you for your willingness to serve on this critically important board. Mr. Kellam, I'm obviously very familiar with your work as well. And the commission that you're going on to is, is as important as it ever has been during these times. I believe last year they may have had around a hundred cases or so reported. And that I expect that number to go up. I expect as we continue to have police reform discussions and justice and equity discussions, that more cases will be coming your way. And so your commission is as important as it ever was. And so I thank you for your willingness to serve. And I think we'll have an interesting discussion in Brownie Commission when it comes to budget season. With that being said, I want to thank you all for being here with us this morning. You all will come up for a vote next week and I'm pretty sure you all be confirmed. And so I look forward to working with you and your new roles and capacities here within the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, it is 10:28. Therefore, we will move directly into our standing committee agenda. So I want to say good morning to everyone and welcome to our standing committee agenda for Wednesday, September 9th, 2020. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Until further notice, all meetings will stream live on the city's YouTube channel. Our first order of business is public comments. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation, which are, or may be before city councily and profanity will not be permitted. When you are called on, please give your name and neighborhood for the record. And our first speaker of the day is Mr. William Parker. I see Mr. William Parker, you're on mute.
I'm trying to start my video. Can you?
I can hear you. Yes, sir.
I guess someone has disabled my video store.
I, I'm not sure. We do see your then spin logo. If you could maybe just begin your three minutes.
Okay, I'll go ahead and I'll begin. Okay. So basically, I, I think Deb Gross was speaking out on a water situation, but some of the key notes that I took down from listening to her concerns was that before in the past, they were unable to keep track of what was going on with the water lines. And also she mentioned that they had a terrible tech system setup. And that's what I'm here to talk about tech. As I mentioned yesterday, it would be great if we could encourage the same interest in technology as we have for real estate here in Pittsburgh as African Americans. We need to increase our value in the tech sector. We have to secure our seat in this space and make sure that we're at the table when the talks and discussions take place. We are tech too. We use it, we create it, and we influence formidable functionalities that people in our communities can benefit from. The notion that we don't belong comes from systematic racism. And with any other barrier, this is one that we need to break through now. But we have to do this strategically. We can't rely on referrals from these individuals or institutions that have already been in place and haven't done much in our behalf, on our behalf. Though only exploit our needs and take money meant for us to develop and succeed. And with that being said, if anyone needs a go-to or a second opinion, contact me. My name is William Parker. I'm the CEO of Ben Spin. I'm here to help get people through the door and bring along a lot more. And with that, I'll end.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you very much, Mr. Parker. Our next speaker is Aikuhana Malko Ina.
Greetings. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Greetings to all, giving honor and reverence and respect to the noble warrior ancestors who came before us, whose shoulders I stand upon. It is our charge and it is our duty to restore tranquility, harmony and balance to the earth. Following the blueprint and the guide our ancestors left behind, I am because we are. It is our duty to continue to speak our truth, even if our voices shake. To make sure our voices are heard and that we, the Aboriginal American people misnomered and mislabeled black, African American, colored, Negro and a host of other misnomers. We are the voice, we are the people, and we demand justice in our land. The utmost good faith shall always be observed towards the Indians who are us, the indigenous American people as set forth in a Northwest Ordinance of 1787. This here now is a time to correct the ill-conceived policies and depredations against the American Aboriginal people. There once was a time when there were no Europeans in America. There once was a time when there was no money in America. There once was a time when peace reigned as the normal way of life for Aboriginal American people, mislabeled Indians. There once was a time where we healed ourselves with that, with nature provides, the herbs for the healing of nations. As we watch others who serve our resources and extract them, which today would be called stealing, then you turn around and attempt to sell them back to us. That's like stealing someone's bike. And then they find out that you stole it and try to sell it back to them. We are tired. We are here and we are here to speak our truth. There's already been an apology issued by Congress. House Joint Resolution Number Three, the 110th Congress in the first session. It says, "To acknowledge a history of official depredations and ill-conceived policies by the United States government regarding Indian tribes." They offered an apology on January 4th of 2007. Whereas the ancestors, the Aboriginal American people that I speak for today, we inhabit in our land. We are the stewards of our land. And until we are at the table to discuss the issue concerning Aboriginal American people that have been mislabeled black, Negro and colored, none of the efforts to
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Alex Jackson. Is Mr. Jackson with us? I do not see Alex Jackson. Our next speaker is John Lavakir.
Hi, my name is John Lavakiri and I live in Shadyside. I'm calling to support a ban on the use of facial recognition and predictive policing technologies. Fundamentally, these technologies can only serve to reflect and amplify structural biases inherent in our current system of policing. For instance, predictive policing uses biased and deeply flawed data, such as historical arrests or proxies for neighborhood divestment and poverty in order to make predictions about where crime will occur next. Overpoliced black and brown neighborhoods will be more likely to be registered as locations for potential future crime. As the arrest data going into these models is biased, this means that the predictions of where crime will occur will also be biased, generating feedback loops that further and further perpetuate the criminalization of Pittsburgh's communities of color. No one left in the city of Pittsburgh or CMU champions predictive policing, and it has been technically halted. Pittsburgh police say they don't use facial recognition. This means that this should be, you know, that this would not cause disruptive action to pass this bill. And I, predictive policing has been shown to be ineffective by Iran Corporation study on the city of Chicago's use of predictive policing. And facial recognition technology has been banned by several cities already, as well as predictive policing by at least one city and Pittsburgh could join those, those leaders. In particular, I support the black activist organizer collective's demands, which include the demand to end the criminalization of black people by stopping surveillance, facial recognition collection and targeting of black organizers, activists and community members. And, and ending predictive policing, stopping location monitoring, disclosing all bids on surveillance and probation surveillance, and disclosing current and past surveillance initiatives. Any move in that direction is certainly welcomed. I urge city council to ban the use of predictive policing and facial recognition technologies and to in general discourage the adoption of technological solutions for issues that require other kinds of reforms.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Steve Stamey.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. Hello. My name is Stephen Stamey and I've lived in the Friendship area for the past 39 years. When I moved here, this area was all crack houses and whorehouses. Many people moved here and helped clean up the crime, the filth and the graffiti. People did the work it takes to change an area of Pittsburgh for the better. We put stop signs in where there were none. We fixed the street lights, trimmed bushes and trees. Now it is a well-lit, safe place to live. We worked with the city and our councilman at the time, Bill Peduto, to widen the streets and intersections where possible. There has not been an accident at this intersection in front of my home for the past 30 years because of this. Did anyone ask the people living here if we wanted a 50-foot painting of clowns and balloons? Or anything else that people can imagine? Did you bother to ask? Did you bother to ask or mention that this plan has been in the works for the past nine months? And nobody bothered to tell the homeowners who live here? What is being proposed is nothing more than graffiti. There is no such thing as asphalt art. And the twenty-five to seventy-five thousand dollars that will be spent, plus constant upkeep and maintenance on the site, is money wasted. The city is bankrupt and apparently owes a hundred and ten million dollars over top of what they usually owe, and they can't afford this. The proposed traffic changes are ridiculous and dangerous and will eliminate much of the existing parking. How are school buses, EMS trucks, fire trucks, ambulances, and access to all these delivery trucks approved recently by the city? The roads are too narrow for normal traffic as it is, with or without parked cars. City Council just approved three new apartment houses and office buildings on the same block. And at the intersection, it will over top of all, over top of all these, only has a minor amount of parking. So there'll be no parking for any of these people. Not any of the apartments, not any of the commercial establishments, so they will park in Friendship. The people proposing these traffic changes do not live at this intersection and won't have to look at this thing every day. Bill Paduto likes the idea, and Deb Gross apparently likes the idea. Maybe put it in front of their homes. Ms. Gross lives in Highland Park on a wide street, just wide enough for clowns and balloons. Maybe use this money to actually help children who are hungry or in danger. Stupid ideas from stupid uninformed people lead to stupid things happening. This is not a canvas for real art, this is my home. Please cheapen your own neighborhood and leave us alone. Thank you.
Thank you, our next speaker is Caitlin Bruce.
Hi, good morning, my name is Caitlin Bruce, I'm a resident of Lawrenceville. I'm calling to support a ban on predictive policing and facial recognition because it functions to further disenfranchise and marginalize black and brown communities. Technologies are only as good as their designers. Dr. Sophia Noble has a book called Algorithms of Oppression that argues that algorithmic technologies reflect the biases that are already endemic in society, and so it's highly likely that a technology like predictive policing will just further reinforce the biases and the violence that are endemic to policing, and we also know that this is the case in a city like Pittsburgh where there's a history of police violence against people of color. And so I'm also calling to support the Black Organizer Collective demands about predictive policing, and a call for, you know, focusing on programs that don't criminalize people based on racist, you know, predictive arguments that have no connection to their communities or their lived realities, thank you.
Thank you very much, our next speaker is Jeffrey Scanlon.
Hi, my name is Jeffrey Scanlon, and I live in East Liberty. I'm a graduate student studying public policy and data science at CMU, and I'm calling to express my concern over the continued use of facial recognition and predictive policing technologies, and the ways this disproportionately harms and criminalizes black and brown communities. I support a complete and total ban on the use of these technologies. In particular, I support the Black Activist Organizer Collective demands of the city and county, which includes the demand to end the criminalization of black people by number one, stopping surveillance, facial recognition collection, and targeting of black organizers, activists, and community members. And two, ending predictive policing, stopping location monitoring, disclosing all bids on surveillance and probation surveillance, and disclosing current and past surveillance initiatives. Fundamentally, these technologies are built around structural biases. These technologies therefore will only serve to further amplify the biases within our policing system. And data science, for instance, when you develop predictive models, you have to use historical data to do what they call training your model, to teach your model how to predict. But we know that the data that's used to train these policing models is already biased and deeply flawed itself. So what will you see as the result? The model will continue to predict crime in neighborhoods from which we have divested, in neighborhoods experiencing poverty. And so policing actions and efforts will continue to be focused in these neighborhoods, which in turn generates new data to feed into the algorithm, which in turn continues to direct police attention into these neighborhoods, and the cycle goes on and on. And in just one or two of these cycles, you create a reinforcing positive feedback loop that perpetuates harm on black and brown communities. There is no way to divorce bias from this model when the very data that is used to generate this model is biased. So I urge City Council to ban the use of predicting predictive policing and facial recognition technologies, and to in general discourage the adoption of technological solutions for issues that require other kinds of reform. Thank you.
Thank you, our next speaker is Chai Smith.
Hi, my name is Chai Smith, and I'm a resident of Bloomfield. I'm calling also to support a ban on the use of predictive policing and facial facial recognition technology in Pittsburgh. As stated by others, facial recognition technology has been shown to have racist biases and is based on racist ordeals as neighborhoods which are already overpoliced are policed even more. Pittsburgh did not consult the community members when they implemented this with Carnegie Mellon, and they should not only say no to continuing predictive policing, but also prevent testing and use of it in Pittsburgh and Carnegie Mellon's continued agenda in Pittsburgh, which has infiltrated our safety. It's been said that in the trial runs for predictive policing, that it should be done in a place, it should be tested in a place in which they can properly figure out what's going wrong, to troubleshoot and to be able to have a place where crime is high. Pittsburgh is not that place, it has been shown that the police have many, go on many of their own racist ideas, and there are deaths like Antoine Rose. Our police are not to be trusted, they need to be held accountable for their actions. And until we get a better handle of our police, we cannot be using these police to input data into a system, which again is continuing the feedback loop, which is targeting black and brown people more than others. It is also not, facial recognition technology has not been shown to be as effective on black and brown people or trans people, and this is at their, this is at to their demise. We're not even supposed to be using this technology, Pittsburgh uses this technology. It uses excuses, it says, oh, it falls under digital research, however, it has said many a time that it will not, and yet it keeps doing it. Our city is not responsible enough to use this technology, which is not going to get us any further. So please ban this. In specific, I also support the Black Activist Organizer Collective and the demands of the city and county, which include the demand to end the criminalization of black people by stopping surveillance, facial recognition collection, and targeting of black organizers, activists, and community members, and ending predictive policing, stopping location monitoring, disclosing all bids on surveillance and probation surveillance, and disclosing current and past surveillance initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, our next speaker is Adam Hayes. Is Adam Hayes with us? I do not see it, our next speaker is then Levon Ritter. They were here at one point, I now do not see them, Levon Ritter. Our next speaker is Rebecca Zito.
Wait, wait, sorry, I have my mic unmuted now.
Okay, yes.
Thank you, my name is Levon Ritter, and I'm a resident of Bloomfield. Today I'm calling to talk about an issue that is most pertinent in our topical news, but I think stretches back to the founding of America and our principles itself, the main one being our right to liberty. Now, it didn't take much for a revolution, in my opinion, but one of the key things that we revolted over in the seventeen hundreds was the right to privacy, and not being opposed to surveillance back then, which was not nearly as invasive as something like facial recognition or wiretapping. So it was just over conversations in mail. And now seeing how much surveillance has evolved and how it's applied in totalitarian countries like China, for instance. I for one do not want to see that type of technology stateside. To me, it's an affront on our rights to be under constant surveillance, and to have our faces in the database where they can be tracked, and worst-case scenario, stolen and leaked, as has happened to some prominent activists in Pittsburgh. I don't think, regardless of what anyone thinks of the police department in Pittsburgh, I think no one should be trusted with access to that kind of information. And keeping all our records is an invasion of privacy, like, or should I say, keeping our faces and monitoring us that way. I for one don't want to be tracked, and I'm assuming a lot of other people do, because that is a founding principle of this country. The right to privacy and individual liberty. And so I hope that this council will ban the use of facial recognition predictive policing by the Pittsburgh Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, our next speaker is Rebecca Zito. I do not see Ms. Zito, but is Ms. Zito with us? If not, our next speaker is Sarah Birmingham. Ms. Birmingham, if you unmute yourself. Okay, we'll come back to Ms. Birmingham, our next speaker is Jennifer Lines.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Lines, my pronouns are she/her/her's or they/them/they're's, and I have been a resident of Pittsburgh for just shy of a decade. I am also calling to speak out against the use of facial recognition technology and predictive policing. But I am here not just as a citizen of Pittsburgh, but also as a professional data scientist. I work for a Fortune five hundred company as a natural language data specialist. And while I primarily work with written and spoken language, I am also interested in pictorial data recognition, both as a professional and personal interest of mine. I also want to make it clear that I am here speaking as an individual and not on behalf of my employer. And you have heard from other speakers, and hopefully you will continue to hear about the dangers of predictive policing and facial recognition technology as it targets marginalized communities. I also want to say that professionally, this technology is not good enough to be used and implemented effectively. We have seen earlier this year how mega corporations like Facebook are keeping data, are keeping information about people that should, that they ought not to. They are going to end up paying over half a billion dollars in a settlement for keeping biometric data that they should not have. And mega corporations like Clearview AI have earned global condemnation for their misuse of the implementation of these technologies. And if we are not able to trust the corporations that have the biggest access to resources and money to fund these, I fail to see how we should trust really any corporation to implement these safely and effectively. Facial recognition and predictive policing is often appealing because it seems that it will remove bias, but any data scientist that is worth their salt will tell you that results are only as good as their data. And our data here is not sufficient. It was mentioned before that we are currently grappling with the legacy of racist policing, not only just in the city of Pittsburgh, but also in America as a whole. And this is the data that we would be basing things like predictive policing on, and it is going to lead to the increased criminalization of black and brown people. And this is quite frankly unacceptable. In addition, as we continue with the COVID nineteen pandemic, we are also going to be needing to deal with the fact that the way that we move forward with facial recognition is going to alter, as we are now hopefully going to only be exposing the top halves of our faces. And this, this quite substantially changes the model that we should be working on. I want to, like others, support the Black Activist Organizer Collective demands of the city and county, which includes the demand to end the criminalization of black people by stopping surveillance, facial recognition collection, and targeting of black organizers.
Thank you very much, our next speaker is Brandy Fisher.
Hi, oh, I'm sorry, this is Sarah, and I'm ready to go whenever you would like me to. Sorry about earlier.
You can begin.
Okay, my name is Sarah Birmingham, and I live in the Garfield neighborhood of Pittsburgh. Like others, I'm calling in concern for the continued criminalization of black and brown people through technologies such as facial recognition and predictive policing. I unequivocally support a ban on the use of these technologies, in particular, I support the Black Activist Organizer Collective demands, which include the demand to end the criminalization of black people by stopping surveillance, facial recognition collection, and targeting of black organizers, activists, and community members, and ending predictive policing, stopping location monitoring, disclosing all bids on surveillance and probation surveillance, and disclosing current and past surveillance initiatives. As a graduate student in information and computer science, I'd like to take a moment to remind those unaware of the fundamental premise that garbage in equals garbage out, or that our computational tools are only as good as the people who design them, and only as objective as the information that they're fed. The idea of algorithms as dispassionate and even-handed administrators of justice is a mess. Because our data on crime is notoriously incomplete, easily manipulated, severely undermined by racial bias, and at times outright fabricated. The predictions generated by predictive policing algorithms are at best useless, and at their worst, a major threat to civil liberties. Many studies show similar rates of drug abuse and domestic violence in affluent white neighborhoods, as in low-income minority neighborhoods, but predictive policing will only continue to punish one of these groups, while letting the other continue to perpetuate harm. Imagining that we have the capability and the tools to predict crime in a meaningful way at this point in time is unbelievable hubris on the part of misled politicians and delusional scientists. Further, a study on facial recognition technology by the National Institute of Standards and Technology found a rate of false positives for Asian and African-American faces to be up to one hundred times greater than the rate of false positives for identifying white faces. The real crime here is deploying a failed, harmful, and Orwellian technology against more than a third of Pittsburgh's population. I urge City Council to ban the use of predictive policing and facial recognition technologies, and in general to discourage the adoption of technological and punitive solutions for issues that require other kinds of reforms. I'd like to close with a quote from Dr. Kathy O'Neill, author of Weapons of Mass Destruction. Big data processes codify the past, they do not invent the future. Predictive policing and facial recognition technologies are not scientific, they are not fair, they are not just, and they do far more harm than good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, our next speaker is Brandy Fisher. I do not see Brandy Fisher, but is Brandy Fisher with us? Not seeing her, our next speaker is Joseph Gnome.
Hi, council members and other people in the public. My name is Joseph Gname, and I live in Oakland. I'm twenty-three, so I don't know a lot, but I would like to add a statement for the predictive policing and facial recognition hearing. I just graduated from CMU with a degree in computer science. I don't speak on behalf of CMU, but I did research on a similar project as this crime hotspot project for a class. I didn't implement it, but I had similar ideas, and they came from the wrong place. I want to apologize for thinking about statistics as a way to judge people or figure out which people are better and which people are worse. That's racism. The Bible says, "Do not judge by appearances, but judge righteous judgment." And I know Jesus also came to forgive racism. Thank you for your time and for your service too. Thank you for your time and for your service too.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker is Laura Perkins. Yes.
Hello, hi there. My name is Laura Perkins. I live in Friendship. Before I get to my comment, I just wanted to do a procedural suggestion that if we don't know the gender of folks, to use the term they. It's more respectful since we can't make assumptions. I'm here to make a public comment in the support in support of the ban on predictive policing and facial recognition. Our black and brown communities are not guinea pigs. I personally work at CACOS on Jose and the Emergency Response Organizer. I see ICE detentions and I respond to ICE detentions and family separation in the Pittsburgh area. Pittsburgh is a welcoming city. But facial recognition software and predictive policing do not go along with that title. Facial recognition and predictive policing disproportionately target black and brown people, as many folks have commented already. There was a program which was an extension of what this proposal is in Chicago. And in the end, it put 50% of black men between the ages of 20 and 29 into a database. That essentially said that they are they should be targeted. 50% of black men between the ages of 20 and 29. This is clearly a racist program that we cannot support. In terms of immigration, how can we be sure that the the security of this information, given how technology advances so fast? Families are separated in Pittsburgh based on similar technology. I know that the Department of Motor Vehicles makes a lot of money off selling information that they have. And it's completely immoral and we cannot have this happen in Pittsburgh with our policing policies. This is not how we want our city to be, especially as a welcoming city. I encourage the this council to set up a meeting with either Pennsylvania ACLU, American Civil Liberties Union, or the Pittsburgh Chapter. Which are obviously very connected to better understand this topic because the fact that it's even being introduced is is a travesty. Lastly, I just want to say that watering down this policy is not acceptable. We cannot have any exceptions or loopholes to the ban on predictive policing and facial recognition. And as many folks have already mentioned, the Black Activist Collective have already talked about this and set up a very clear. Proposed a very clear set of 12 demands which address this. So instead of they are the people we need to talk to. They are the people that need to be consulted. Reach out to them and talk with them and ask them about their policies. Ask the ACLU about why this is a horribly racist program that is being proposed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of speakers for the day. We will now move on to our standing committee agenda. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Cahill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Cal Smith.
Yeah.
Ms. Joss Berger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Levalle Chair.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. We have one new paper, Bill 659.
Bill 659 Resolution, Amending Resolution 401, which authorizes the mayor and director of the Department of Finance to enter into a professional services agreement with CHR Catering Company, Inc. For the purposes of providing the city with net food vending services through vending machines.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That'll take us to our invoices. We need a motion on the invoices.
Motion to approve extremely brief discussion.
Second.
Madam Clerk, are we working off a version two? I have two agendas for the morning. Can you tell me, please, are we working off the version, what was labeled version two?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you. No further comment.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Invoices are approved. We do have P cards for approval. We need a motion on the P cards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That'll take us to Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Mr. O'Connor, one deferred bill, Bill 647.
Bill 647 ordinance, amended and supplemented the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances that Title I Administrative Article III. Organization Chapter 116, Department of Public Safety to regulate the use of facial recognition and predictive technology.
Motion to approve discussion.
Second.
I first would like to make a motion to amend. Everybody should have received the amendments yesterday.
A second on the amendment.
Any discussion on the amendment?
Could you tell us a little bit about what the amendment does differently?
Sure, I was gonna amend the bill, but then I'll just do that right now and then talk about the bill. So the amendments, there's they came from law and public safety. The ones from law basically iron out the criminal history records that we have to put in there. In case, you know, for some reason and based on the speakers and a lot of support that we've gotten for these bills. If in the future, if a bill like this were to come up to approve. There are some privacy issues with regards to individuals' privacy that council members would not be privy to. If this bill were to come up and somebody were to explain why this technology would ever be needed. But if it would, you can't go into specific details about that. So that was something from the Law Department. With regards to public safety, there were some technical words that they would like to be add as well as unextenuating circumstance. For example, if we unfortunately, I don't like to discuss this, but if, for example, a mass shooting were to occur and the individual was still on the loose. That they could tap into some state or federal technologies to help catch that criminal. Or if there was a bombing, extenuating circumstances like that. If there were extenuating circumstances and it went past, I believe, 30 days, then they would have to come back to council to get approval to extend that. If that individual who was committing those horrible acts of violence was not caught at that point. So that was worked out through public safety over the last week. So those are the two amendments. Or well, there's a couple amendments, but those were the two main ones. Everything else was basically redefined and then moved to a different section. So everybody is on board with that. Thank public safety as well as law for getting us those amendments over the weekend. I want to thank all the speakers today. I want to thank council members who I spoke to about this issue. And I think, you know, at this point in time, it's the right thing to do, given that we do not have this internal technology. And more and more cities are starting to do bans like this, especially on predictive policing as well as facial recognition. So I just want to thank everybody for their support and willing to move these bills forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, we need a motion. We have a motion in a second to amend the bill. All those in favor of amending the bill.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is amended. Any discussion on the amended bill? I think I saw three hands. Reverend Burgess, then I believe I saw Councilwoman Kraus and then Councilman Wilson.
So I am. Thankful that all of the speakers were supporting brown and black communities and have our best interests at heart. But as the representative of some of those same communities, I'm going to need some time to examine this bill. I am against, for instance, any sorts of shootings or homicides. I am against mass shootings. I'm against suicide. I am against homicide. I'm against domestic-related killings. One of the things that we've not talked as much about, which is a significant problem in our communities, is the homicide rate. And that unfortunately, because of variety of factors in those communities. There is a resident recitancy hesitation to to tail or to work with the police. I'm also of the belief that we need to reduce the size of our police force. And I am also hesitant, if we're going to reduce the size of the force, to also reduce the amount of tools that they have and the technology that they have. Now, I'm grateful for these amendments, but it's going to take me some time to really look at them. And figure out what impact they have on the communities that I serve. I'm hopeful that we can hold this piece of legislation to give me some time to talk to law myself. I'm grateful for all the support for those people who are theoretically, who are who are who are not theoretically, who are. Who are voicing support for the people that I represent. Not that I represent all of them, but I represent a good chunk of them. And so if this legislation is designed to encourage and protect those people, I need to see that, understand that before I can support it. So I'm grateful for all the work everyone's done. I look forward to examining the bill in great detail. You know, my staff reached out earlier this week and the original bill, which we were not clear about. These amendments show some things. I may want to offer some amendments myself. And so I want to, you know, examine it in some detail. I hope that we hold this and then give me some time to do my due diligence. Because even though we don't own the technology, it's my understanding that we do have access to it through other sources. And I am really, really concerned, you know, that there that homicide occurs in a black community. We're not that we are prohibited from somehow of using every available technology to solve that crime. And so I'm going to just that those are my concerns. I think the bill's author for sponsor for bringing it forward. And I will spend the next week or so with my staff, really, really in conversations and with other council people. So I can understand this. At this point, I really do not understand this bill well enough to support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe I saw Councilwoman Smith's hand go up. Is that?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to know if someone from Public Safety was here. Or law.
Yes, this is Assistant Director Schmidt, here in place of Director Hisrich. He has another meeting to attend.
Thank you. Could you talk a little bit about this bill? And what your thoughts are on the amendments and and how? Is the department supportive? It sounds like Councilman O'Connor did all his work, working with everyone. Is the department supportive of this, of the newest amendments?
We're still reviewing those and we actually just received an opinion last evening from law on the amendments that we're still trying to review. So we would support holding this as well, so to give us more time to review all the proposed amendments. And further discussion with council as well as law on this.
I want to be honest, I don't mind. I don't mind holding because I actually told Councilman O'Connor, I asked for an opinion from the Law Department for these bills, for Reverend's bills that we already passed. And for any future bills, because I think that whenever we're doing something that pertains to public safety or public health, we have to do our due diligence. We can't just all throw legislation on the table and and hope that we're making a change when the fact is, a lot of the legislation I've seen, I mean. I think we really need to do something comprehensive so that we really are seeing the change that we want to see overall. And I mean, we may disagree on what those changes are, but I think that we need to work together to get to a place where we're all comfortable. But having said that, I I I'm not opposed to to some of this legislation. So I just want to make sure that whatever happens, that you're working together with Councilman O'Connor to get to a place where he can get his his bills passed. Because it seems like he's been working on this for, you know, for a little bit of time. But I want to make sure that it's that something that the Law Department, because I had kept hearing that there was some some concerns with the legislation. And just that they needed some some maybe some technical changes in the wording. But if he was working with the Law Department and Public Safety, I don't understand why those still exist. So I don't know if that's overlapping the time that because we just got the opinion late last night or yesterday. And so I just want to make sure as we move forward, we're working together and more in a more comprehensive way. And working with the public. We need some of the people to come to the table that have concerns. But we also need to have the Public Safety Department and Law Department, everyone together. Moving forward. I'm just going to say that moving forward, anything that comes before this council, I'm going to make sure we get legal opinions on. And I did talk to Reverend Burgess about his bill yesterday and just said, I just want to make sure that everything we're doing is is done in a way that is is legally correct and that can't be challenged and. Or shouldn't be challenged. So with that said, I'm okay with the one week hold. I don't know if Councilman O'Connor feels comfortable holding for a week, so I'll leave that. Leave that waiting for some discussion, but I I'm comfortable holding for one week. I think that if the administration wants one week, the director wants one week. It's it's one week for something very serious and but I think that in the end we'll have a piece that we could, you know, that was that is legally correct and written really well. So I'm supportive of the hold, but I just don't know with the will of council, everyone in council, I think seems like everyone I when I was talking is okay with a one week hold, but not indefinitely.
Thank you, Madam President. Next we have Councilman Wilson.
Yes, thank you. So I I applaud Councilman O'Connor for putting forward this cutting-edge legislation. And, you know, I think there's a real opportunity to daylight some of the operations that happen within the within the department. And. I find this to be a very, one of the most comprehensive pieces of legislation that have come forward since I've been on council. For instance, there is a lot of a lot of data behind. You know, supporting or not supporting the bill with the National Institutes of Science and Technology that's referenced in the bill to make its case. You know, I find I find that 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 information is very, very helpful. And to know that there are 99 different products out there, pieces of software that offer different algorithms with each within each of those 99. Pieces of software. And I'm uncertain currently where we are, which one, which software do we send out to? Which, you know, I've heard that we. You know, that we send out some images. I'm not sure if the Public Safety could speak to that, how we currently operate. I mean, I'd like to have that conversation, but I could also. Get some clarity during that week hold, if that was an opportunity. But if not, I'm I'm willing to ask the questions now. So I'm not sure, Chair, if you'd like to have an interrogative with me and the Councilman O'Connor in terms of what this bill. You know, the future of this bill and if we can hold it one week.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if if you guys want to take a vote on holding the bill, we might as well do that now. I'm going to vote no. We got our amendments from law. We got our amendments from public safety. They had at least two weeks plus to review this. I don't think we need to hold it, but instead of having, you know, a longer conversation, let's just take the vote on the hold. If members request a hold, that's fine, but I'm going to vote no on a hold. I think that we all know and we've heard and we've seen technology that does not work and it affects people. And we're still willing to wait a week to get relatively the same answer from both law and public safety. If we always waited on these opinions, we would have passed basically most of our bills that that do pass if we wait and wait and wait. But if council wants to take a roll call vote on the hold, I suggest we do that now. But I am not going to vote to hold this bill. We got our amendment from the Law Department. We got our amendment. We got our amendments from Public Safety. We had a meeting with Public Safety two weeks ago. They sent over their amendments. They still have till Tuesday if there's anything that they want to change and we could recommit it. But at this point, if there's not going to be any drastic changes to it, I don't see a need to hold, but I'd rather have that vote now if you want to call, roll call vote on the hold. And then that way, we can either pass this bill today or hold it till next week and go from there. I'm fine either way.
Thank you, Councilman. I, you know, my concern.
And, and Councilman Wilson, that wasn't opposed to your conversation. I mean, you and I could obviously talk about it. I'm just saying, instead of having the long conversation, and not, not with regards to you, Councilman, just if there's a motion to hold, I'd rather have that vote now than go into a long detailed conversation where we're going to have to, you know, I, I don't know what would occur after that, but I'd rather have the vote. If somebody's going to make a motion to hold, I'd rather have that vote now than have a long conversation go back.
Point of order, no one motioned to hold.
Correct, correct. I, I'm just asking if, if the will of the body is to hold, I would rather have somebody make the motion to hold in second and we take that vote now rather than going through the bill line by line and then coming back and doing it again and making amendments, so.
Okay.
I don't know if the Chair, if the Chair would want to, if somebody wants to request it, they can.
So can I just say, does other, do other members have questions?
Yes, I've been holding up my hand, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
That's okay. Councilman Wilson still has the floor. He asked for, I see you, Councilwoman Gross. He asked for the opportunity to have an interrogatory with Councilman O'Connor to see about his willingness to hold. And now I'm hearing Councilman O'Connor say is, if we're, if, if members want to hold, he would rather you do that now as opposed to we go through a very long conversation. With that being said, Councilman Wilson still has the floor. And there are members who did raise their hand who still want to speak. Councilman Wilson?
I just want to mention that, you know, I, I think it's important that we daylight some of what we're talking about since some of the commenters and some of the emails that I've received may not truly understand our current operations with this, this type of technology, which we don't own. And quite frankly, we have the power to, we already have the power to vote on software that comes to the table. So this is, you know, I understand that, you know, it's good to put an ordinance in to, you know, let the public know that we're serious about what we're talking about. But also at the same time, you know, we, we, we do have this power. I mean, every, every IMP, the software that comes through, that's our responsibility. So I'm just curious on, you know, what that looked like, how, like what is different about this versus what we typically do every time software comes to council? And also, I think it'd be good for the public to hear our current operations in the use of this. For instance, I had, I had two homicides a week and a half ago in my district. And I'm just curious is, like, was any of this technology used to try and bring any, any justice to the families and, and really understand, you know, how we use this technology? I mean, I, I understand, I don't want, I don't want anyone to be, you know, survey, under surveillance. And technically, we don't do that. And, you know, but, you know, I, in the language, it talks about false positives. It talks about the use of, the use of this surveillance and, and how it's bad. But, you know, I saw a public source article where it references one out of 32 arrests recently in the protests. And, you know, so that's only one of 32. And what was the reason for that? I mean, I would, I would be interested in talking about parameters and also guardrails on this type of, on this type of action so that we're not just loosely using this on, on any one case. And I appreciate that there is language in there currently to, you know, support, to have access to this if there was an emergency situation. So I think we can, I, I like to, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll let my time go right now. And I just wanted to say those comments.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it, I think we've, we've all heard a lot of public support for a ban on predictive policing. I just want to recap a little bit that what we understand is the difference between kind of using evidence, using predictive policing or using facial recognition technology. Because I feel like that is, you know, this is a little bit brave new world. Often, when the public and council kind of get to new types of technology, whether it's in any, any city department, we have a learning curve. And I think this is one of those areas where some members of the public are, we've heard a lot tested from people who actually work in the field as students or as experts. But less so from members of the public who are outside of the field. And so I'm not sure we all have the same understanding or that, that, you know, I'm not even 100% confident in my own understanding, I think, like Councilwoman Burgess also mentioned. And so, you know, to point out that there are definitions on the second page of the amended legislative version. But I just want to read some of those, that new underlying language out loud. Because I think there are both benefits, but also maybe deficits, right? There's, there really is kind of almost outlets or I'm tempted to say loopholes in those definitions. So for example, facial recognition technology is, you know, generally understood as a computer-based software program that literally is using the biometric measurements of your face, right? To then go look for your face in other digital content, right? Maybe from another digital camera, but maybe also in social media so that it's pulling information about your face and you out of any kind of digital material and without your knowledge. And this is why people talk about the invasion of privacy with it. But also without anybody's permission. So the machine could be doing this without any human knowing it. And it says that here, without a subject's knowledge or consent, and then the underlined bolded new phrase here and in automated or semi-automated manner. So it isn't precluding it happening in a, a human-directed manner. So even this version of this bill doesn't stop if we all voted yes today. I read this new language as it's not stopping in the Pittsburgh Police. A human in the police department directing them to look for Deb Gross's biometric measurements and then go scan all social media for Deb Gross, go screen all street cameras for Deb Gross, go look for Deb Gross because a human asked it to, seems to be allowed here. There might be an upside for some members and some members of the public, but a downside for others, right? Where this, this version of this bill and the new phrase in an automated or semi-automated manner in the definition of facial recognition technology, embedding that automation in the definition of the technology means that it could be directed by a human. And similarly, with predictive policing technology, it's the new language says in a fully or partially automated computational application or based on machine learning or artificial intelligence. So if it was based on, again, human definition and human application, an officer in the police department directs it, this rule would permit it. So to profile, basically. And the way I understand predictive policing technology is to use kind of some other data from independent, unrelated to you to basically indicate that you fit a type. So it's like, it's basically like profiling. But it also profiles places. So the characteristics of a neighborhood, basically, or a location and also the type of individuals who kind of just are similar to whatever data was put into the profiling. And I hear people saying that that's also kind of just a violation of our freedoms, right? To, to not walk around being suspected of being criminal actors just because of the place we are or some type that we are. And that's how I understand those objections. And there, but there is a great deal of language added to this draft that frankly, I'm just seeing, you know, this morning. So it does, well, I'm really supportive of the, I told Councilman O'Connor I would, I would vote it. And I am happy to vote, the provisional vote today. I think we all have a bit to digest and keep up with, right? And so that is, I think, another element here that I think cities across the country are, and citizens are just coming to learn more deeply about what are these capacities and what are we comfortable with and what are we not comfortable with? And how do we, if we're not comfortable with it, how do we effectively ban it? And so while I'm happy to vote today, I do think that those couple of aspects need further exploration, right? How are we allowing, are we just uncomfortable with the automation part? Or are we also uncomfortable with putting the tools in officers' hands when they are allowing both a mining of information and on their own cognizance, like without a warrant? And are we also comfortable, uncomfortable with automating profiling of places and people? But are we comfortable with the police department having a human-directed profiling of people and places? And so to me, that's the kind, there's a, a difference line, a divide here that we haven't talked about before that I'm seeing in the new language. And so I just wanted to highlight those. And I think we may not get to a comfortable level even in one week. I think this is something we're just going to have to keep eyes on, right? And so I don't see a reason not to get started and to say, let's move forward with this language, but keep this conversation going. And I think we, we have a really good ability to learn more from our public, learn more about where our comfort levels are, how to enact those comfort levels and those lines. But then also hear more from our department because as Councilwoman Wilson pointed out, we are told that we're not using these techniques. But I would like, still like to hear more about what we are doing because I, I, I don't understand fully what that answer is. That's not a deep enough answer for me. I would like to hear more fully what our department is doing and what they are not doing. And how are they still working with the universities? And to what extent? And I think that needs to be transparent so that we can all know about it at the same time. And I think there was one more point, but I've kind of lost it now. So that's all I have for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I just, sorry, Mr. Chair. Just on Councilwoman Gross's point, the automated language that changed in there, it won't go through. So we're trying to clarify, like, sending it through a program where at any time, you couldn't, at this point, stop an officer from going online and looking up social media by him or herself. So that was why we tried to make it clear that an automated system, but I hope that is why automated was added to that portion of the language. But thank you.
Right, right. Can I just respond at that? I know, I have also, I had a horrible double homicide in District Seven. That was, and the, the suspect who was eventually convicted was found through the timing of, you know, cameras on the street and bank cameras.
Yes.
I've also worked with neighbors in neighborhood problems who, you know, where it was the, the, it made, it, it was important to get more cameras installed. We have minor crimes that are, you know, suspects are identified by doorbell cameras. We have, you know, there are a lot of places where cameras are used to collect information and to find suspects and to link suspects with crimes that do happen on a daily basis. And so, like I said, I think this is an ongoing conversation where we all have to start to understand where are these dividing lines? Like, we're comfortable going this far, but not farther.
Yeah, and, and as you mentioned, those types of cameras are all exempt as well. But yeah, that's, that's why the automotive was added. So I hope that answered the question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So, Councilman Gross?
Yeah, thank you very much. I can't seem to find where Ray's hand is. For some reason, it seems to have gone away. I don't know, maybe it's my platform this morning. So what we're seeing take place in, in discussion today is members that believe in limiting this kind of technology and at the same time wanting to get it right while wading through an enormous amount of information that I, for one, don't feel 100% comfortable saying I understand completely. We got the amendments. We got the legal opinion. And I, I, as many members have said, have not had a chance to go through it and fully digest and comprehend. If, if members wish to hold today, I will support the hold. If member wishes, members' wishes are to go through and then recommit next week if we're not fully satisfied, I appreciate it. I can support that. I think what we're struggling with here is that we all understand the importance of this. We want to do the right thing. We are wading through complicated technologies and trying to find our way to balance what is in the best interest of the constituency that we serve, the, the clear concerns they have of the constituency that we serve, the the clear concerns they have about empowering law enforcement to solve and resolve horrible crimes that have taken place in each of the council districts that we represent. And at the same time, balance that power with the responsibility to never use it in predictive or harming or damaging ways that focus solely on certain groups of people. I'm going through the law opinion and the amendments as we're having this discussion. And I texted Councilwoman O'Connor and said, it's giving me a headache because I'm I'm trying to to put it all through and make certain that I'm making the right decision on an incredibly important and yet complex manner. I just need some time to to see it through. That does not mean that I will not support. Ultimately, I will support. There's 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 no doubt in my mind. But I want to support understanding that we have achieved, as best we can, the delicate balance that I think we are struggling to find. And in in light of comments that Councilwoman Gross made, I would reiterate to say that I believe this is this is technology that will be ongoing. It will not be the first time that we as a council will wrestle with this or try to understand it. And I don't believe the actions that we take now are going to be final and definitive. I think these are going to be ongoing conversations that will keep coming back to the council. And we're going to need to as understand as technology moves and things change and new systems become available, we're once again going to be charged and challenged with making finding that that difficult balance that empowers law enforcement, but does not enrich law enforcement to overstep and serves in the best interest of the constituency that we serve. I don't know if that clarified anything, but those are the thoughts that are going through my head right now. And I appreciate the opportunity to make them.
Thank you, Councilman Cross. Hold on, any others for first round? If not, I will simply say before I come to you, Madam President, that I'll sort of echo Counterman Kraus's supports. I was prepared to support the bill and ultimately will support the bill. But if members need an additional week to digest it, to fully understand it, as well as, as Reverend Burgess did, may look at additional amendments to the bill. I'm supportive of their of that effort. This is not currently utilized. So I don't think a one week hold would be detrimental to the bill. But I'm will be Councilwoman Smith.
Motion to hold one week.
Second.
Roll call vote on the motion to hold.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor.
No.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. LaValle Chair.
Aye.
Aye, seven, nose one.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I just add something else?
Yes.
Yeah, I know this is an important endeavor for the councilman. I know he has the best intensive heart and is working diligently to to bring this to fruition. And I don't want it to go and say that the council appreciates the effort and the efforts that have been made now and and support that and will continue to work with the councilman to bring it to fruition.
Absolutely. With that, the bill was held one week, so that'll move us on to our Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill. We have two new papers, Bill 656.
Bill 656, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement between the city and Studio Zewitt for the professional landscape architectural services for Homewood Park infrastructure upgrades at a cost not to exceed $1,630,014.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 657.
Bill 657, Resolution Granting unto Robert J. Lewis, their successors, and assigns them privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use of their own costs and expense, a new projection sign to the front of the existing building at 1344 Fifth Avenue in the first ward, Sixth Council District.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Both say nay. The bill is recommended. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson, one new paper, Bill 662.
Bill 662, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of City Planning to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Natural Resources Defense Council in support of the Food Matters Regional Initiative. The study will be at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve, discussion.
Second.
Councilwoman Wilson.
I guess, please have Director Dash under the table.
Oh, councilmembers.
Hi, Director. See your hard at work. I wanted to, I just want to ask if you could brief us on legislation 662.
Sure, so what the request to the city council is for the department to be able to go through a memorandum of understanding to receive technical services from the National Resources Defense Council. This was this was a grant opportunity, you know, this this is an opportunity to get technical resources. Again, there's no money that's coming to the city for this, for their food matters program. And so what it is, is that they will provide, you know, kind of best practice, you know, they're working in cities like Denver and Baltimore right now that are kind of noted to be more progressive on things like the recycling of food waste, composting and other other similar, you know, kind of work around, you know, around waste. This does fit and is, you know, something that came as an action of the city's climate action plan, which was done by the department. And so, you know, the intention is that, you know, we're going to be, you know, using that, you know, using their their knowledge, their background in other cities to be able to outline where we can work. Some ideas that have already come up have been, you know, can be we be working better with senior centers once that, you know, once pandemic is, you know, has, you know, has, you know, we're back to kind of regular operations in our healthy active living centers around food, you know, can we be using city land in certain ways? I think, you know, be generating recommendations and program development from this work with NRDC. But other than city staff time, you know, of, you know, of one of our planners, there's no other expenditures to the city.
Okay. You said that they've worked with with other cities. And you mentioned, I think you alluded to some of the the action points that could take place after the study. What are some what are some initiatives that have been taken out of cities that, you know, after they done the study?
Um, you know, like I said, I mean, a lot of it has been around how to better, you know, I mean, a lot of this program is really how to better, you know, kind of handle food waste and be able to address issues of food waste. And so we are, you know, again, Pittsburgh is one out of 10 cities that have been selected, you know, you know, for this initiative. The intention is to, you know, is to to prevent food, you know, excess food waste in all of these cities. And and like I said, that's that's the major focus. You know, like I said, some of the, you know, some of the the cities that, you know, we'll be learning from are primarily, you know, Baltimore, Denver, that have done these food waste audits, you know, where they've looked at, you know, at things around city operations and how through city operations, we can better reduce food waste.
Okay, all right, well, thanks. Thanks for explaining that. Appreciate your time.
Any other discussion? Councilwoman Smith. You're on mute, Madam President.
I'm muted, so I don't disturb the meeting and then I disturb the meeting by muting. So I just want to say by composting, I just want to make sure that you're also working with council members. If you recall, the Women's Caucus, in particular, Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Strasburger had been really, really interested in this and trying to work on this for over a year now in terms of composting. And I would like to make sure that there is some communication with council members. It's great that you're working with other people. It's great that you're working with the residents and neighborhoods. But you need to also work with council members. And in particular, I would like some more conversation and dialogue with Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Strasburger. Thank you.
We can definitely do that, Madam President, as as right now, we're just finalizing the MOU so that we can begin, you know, so we can begin this work. But once we do begin this work, I'll make sure that staff do connect with council members as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I am very glad to see this award. It's, I think, long overdue that we expand our municipal participation. We're really fortunate that, as we've seen at council, we've given proclamations to the local non-governmental organization, nonprofit 412 Food Rescue, who has diverted millions of tons, I think, of food waste to add to back into the food stream, right? So I think a bunch of members and myself did some promotions for it where we participated in a food rescue. And for myself, it was going to the downtown Fugers Bagels in Market Square because they kind of dump bagels after really just a few hours. And our pickup that day was a large, I want to say probably a 30 gallon plastic bag full of bagels. It was almost, it seemed like it was like, you know, almost as tall as me. I'm not a very tall person. It was a massive amount of food and we were able then to take it on their app, right? There's a place where you pick up the food waste, but a place that will receive that food so that people can feed and fill hunger gaps. And we dropped it off both to a veterans leadership organization that feeds hungry veterans and to a YMCA where they also have a food pantry. And so it's they have, by virtue of their organization, 412 Food Rescue, again, it's an app you can get on your phone, diverted lots of of food waste. There is another category of food waste, which is not able to be redirected back into our food stream, which is compostable. So right now, as the city, our food waste is going out in our, you know, residential garbage, right? You're just putting it out in your garbage and it adds significantly to the tonnage that our trucks have are filled up with. And that our trucks that they're four miles per gallon diesel fuel drive 15 miles out of the county to then when we pay a tipping fee at a landfill to dump that food waste into a landfill where it just releases methane and contributes to climate issues. We're paying for that vehicle, we're paying for the tonnage to be picked up at curbside. And compost locally can divert that so that there's just less garbage on the trucks, less tonnage, the truck's not filling up as fast and fewer trips out to that landfill and less contribution to the climate damage. And but also is really helpful to our bottom line. And I say this kind of every year, when we have our budget hearings, when we're talking about with the Equipment Leasing Authority that has to replace our waste trucks. And when I talked with DPW and how much we spend on fuel and how much we spend on crews, I also want to mention, since we're talking to city planning today, that you also talk to DPW, because I have in my city farms project in my district and working with the community gardens, two sites that have been waiting for compost bins to be built. So it doesn't even have to take city resources, really. We don't need to have a full-fledged municipal composting, although I would support that as well. My constituents are already taking their food scraps to other places if they can't compost in their own backyard and want to be able to do that at their community gardens. And that's one of the things in the next bill later in the agenda where I keep apologizing for council to because I keep having this ruling, other professional services agreement. You know, we're looking to maybe just, one of the things that we're having grounded strategies do is just come out with the lumber and build some compost bins on site at this public land that people are already using for community gardens so that they can have rich compost that they can add to their gardens. And that's really a very, very minor resource commitment of on our end, right? And for being able to divert waste, improve urban soils and, you know, not pay to have our really out of date fuel inefficient garbage trucks hauling it out to a landfill. The Institute for Local Self-Reliance estimates that a municipal composting program can cut the tonnage of waste in half. We would be able to pick up twice as much. We would have twice the half as much vehicle miles traveled on that fleet. And it's just a net win across the board. So thank you for having this program. And I would love to follow up about where we can just have some quick, easy, light urban tactical deployments for composting. I have two bins in my own backyard. And I know that takes care of all the food waste that comes out of my kitchen. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That'll take us to our Innovation, Performance and Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. We have two new papers, Bill 660.
Bill 660, Resolution Amending Resolution 642 of 2017, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement with RT Lawrence Corporation for the provision of a remittance of processing system.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second. Thank you. Discussion?
I just wanted to ask for Ms. Gula or whoever is the appropriate person to answer some questions about this since it didn't actually come through the IMP department, so I didn't get a briefing on this. I'd like to just learn a little bit more. Whoever is the right person to come to the table.
Good morning, councilmembers. This is Jennifer Gula, and I apologize, but my my video is not working. But I'm the Assistant Director of the Finance Department.
Thank you for being here. I understand this is about purchasing of Red Hawk machines to be able to more quickly and efficiently get tax, something related to taxes back out to the public. But can you just explain this to me and specifically why or how this will save us money or create more efficiencies? I, you know, as you know, we're going into a really difficult budget year. And I want to make sure that everything we're approving techno technology wise is doing that.
Right, so exactly what this is, is a machine that scans documents and checks to be electronically deposited into the bank. And then the data from the forms, the tax forms or the tax payment coupons gets transferred into the host tax system. In the past, the city has used lockbox services through the bank, which has cost us millions of dollars in banking and processing fees. Some years ago, the city moved all of that in-house. And so we do process all of the major tax payments, real estate and business taxes all in-house with our own, basically our own lockbox system. Some years ago, we did purchase a Red Falcon that we use for the depositing and recording of all the business tax payments. We have a smaller OCR scanner that handles real estate. But with the onset and the building out of the new tax system that we hope to roll out next year, we're looking to purchase an additional Red Falcon scanner to handle real estate and any other types of payments to more efficiently process and deposit the revenue.
All right, it looked like I was on mute. So I I guess I'm looking at the bill language and I see that it looks like there will be an addition, it's a little bit hard to suss through, but there will be an additional $359,726 cost for these two machines.
It'll be one machine and the money is actually coming, it's actually being incorporated as part of the new tax system rollout. So it's used from capital funds that were already budgeted for that project.
Okay, just want to point out that the language says, the amended language says to OPEC's Red Falcon machine.
I think I did notice that and I think that maybe it was one and they amended it to say two because it's using the same legislation. But I'll double check though, but to my knowledge, it's one machine.
Okay. And then what about the operating budget? You you mentioned capital, but then operating, there are some changes to operating budget as well?
There are some changes and it would be due to RTL is actually the the data, like the the software that runs the validation data for the scanner. So with that, the operating costs, almost like a subscription fee and then maintenance fees involved with that, which would come out of the operating budget.
And again, those are shifting from other sources over to this?
I believe the operating portion would not be shifting, but the capital portion is shifting. Well, it's not shifting, it's actually money that's in the budget for the project, the tax bill out project.
Okay, so just in really easy to understand language, this is this is creating what kind of efficiencies for us? What how is this making everybody's lives easier and saving time and therefore money?
Well, it actually helps us to process, we don't do this by hand. The scanner will allow us to automatically process all the tax payments that come in every day and then electronically deposit them to the bank. So in the past, we've actually physically done face-to-face banking where we have had to actually take the physical deposits and walk them over and deposit them into a bank. So it saves time. It also saves us money because these, it it actually creates a data file, not just for the tax system, but to the bank. It's an ACH deposit. So we spend money to move the money from us to the bank one time, which is a lot less. which is a lot less than actually paying per deposit for doing a face-to-face bank transaction.
Got it. Okay. So during the time of COVID, it seems like that's an upgrade there so that you have, you can minimize face-to-face banking and that seems clear to me. Okay, those are all of my questions. I'll defer to any other members who wish to ask.
Councilman Cross?
Thank you. Thanks. I'm sorry, I can't seem to see you on my screen. Who are we meeting with again? I'm sorry?
This is Jennifer Gula, the Assistant Finance Director.
Jennifer, thank you. I just, my question, I think, is around how the legislation came over twice. You might not be the, the exact person to answer it, but I don't see the additional dollar expenditure attached to the legislations. Not, at least it's not in our, on our agenda. So we are spending an additional 300-plus thousand to acquire this technology?
For the cost of the machine, it would be yes.
Yes, okay. And so, and you might not be able to answer this, but I'm just curious. The councilwoman is right and, and we're going to say this a million times before the end of the year. We face probably the most challenging budget season that the council has ever faced. I don't know if there's ever been such a dire time. And so, you know, watch the pennies and the dollars will take care of themselves. The, can you approximate me the kinds of savings that come back to us after we expend the 340-odd thousand dollars to acquire the software? Or I mean, the machine, I'm sorry?
Well, before we actually started processing in-house, we would spend at least a couple million dollars a year to pay a bank to do exactly the same we do now. So, and, and since we've brought on the first Red Falcon, we actually reduced just banking fees in general because instead of doing a, each transaction, and we would say a transaction would be a batch of maybe 50 checks that we would deposit, but they charge you for each deposit slip. So if we did, let's say 100 batches of 50 checks that we went and did a face-to-face banking transaction, they would charge us per deposit slip. This way, we get charged per one transaction, which is a file that gets transmitted to the bank and they deposit electronically. And we get that the same day. So our banking fees, once we brought this lockbox system onboard, pretty much were cut in half just to one bank alone, just by being able to do that. So it's been a huge savings.
And so Jennifer, can you approximate even further reductions with the second machine helping us to, to make these kinds of tax deposits?
And I would assume that it would be the same because we're using the same process and we're actually replacing, this machine would be replacing an OCR scanner, which doesn't have the same, it's a lot more basic than what we would be using. What would actually allow us to do is to build this into the new tax system. And with new tax system, they should be able to see, like, once their payment actually gets processed, either a taxpayer would have an account and they might actually be able to see right then and there that their payment was pending, instead of waiting for it to be cashed, which is what they have to see, what they see now. So, so there's savings on time, there's savings on staffing, which would be at a cost to us as well.
So this is also probably another question you can answer, but if you can, I'd appreciate it. Do you, do you have an approximation of the lifespan of a machine like this? Can we, can we count on it saving us the millions of dollars in bank fees? I'm all for that. You know, well into like the next five to seven years?
I can't, I can't answer for sure. I'm, I'm hoping and I'm assuming, and I don't like to assume, but it would probably be for at least 10 years. And I can verify that and, and send you an answer definitively, but I
No, no, I trust your judgment. I just want to have a sense, you know, this council has wrestled with this from the day that Councilwoman Burgess and I walked in the door to today. Technology's changes on a dime and, you know, and we invest and then we realize we haven't made sound investments and we're reinvesting. But I trust your judgment on this. I, I, I cannot justify millions of dollars in banking fees to deposit tax collection, which is the bread and butter of, of city operation. So I'm happy to support this. I can, I can find my way to the wisdom of a one-time expenditure to save us millions of dollars over our lifespan of even as high as 10 years. So I'm happy to support. Thank you, Jennifer, for answering my questions.
You're most welcome.
Thank you. President Smith?
That's okay. I heard my questions answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Similarly, these are, those were great questions. I appreciate both Councilwoman Strasburger and Councilman Kraus asking those questions. I just had kind of, one additional thing came to mind while you were talking. Scola is, one of the things that's on my mind with our current revenue shortfalls is that it's imperative that checks not be sitting around undeposited, right? So it's not just about the total amount that has come in by the end of the year. It's a cash flow issue as well. So is there additional, can you speak to that? I'm assuming this is not saving us, only saving us bank fees, which is fantastic. And I'm really glad to hear about the saving of bank fees. But it seems to me that with a new scanner that's automatically depositing these as an ACH, you're collecting your revenue sooner.
Yes, that would be correct.
Right. Can you give us a sense of how much savings there is in time as well? And like the timing?
Well, before we actually, there still is, at least with business taxes, a lag because even with the scanner, there is a lot of, I guess, verification that takes place in order to push the ACH payment to the bank due to the complication or the complexity of the tax forms themselves, which are being filled out by individuals, they're self
Right. So like they're paying taxes on three employees, but they really have five employees or something like that.
Right. So aside from that, before we actually started using the Red Falcon, we actually did all of that by hand. And it would traditionally put us maybe two months in the rears in depositing checks. Whereas now, even with COVID and having the staff, like sometimes on a limited schedule because of social distancing, we are about four weeks behind. So it cut
Cut it in half.
It cut it in half, yes.
Great.
And that's not working, I mean, for a good portion of the pandemic, they were not operating at full time and in full capacity.
Right, right. So as we kind of hopefully add capacity with staffing, but then also with this investment, which I'm comfortable with also, not only because of the savings, but also because this is mostly a capital budget investment that it was pre-budgeted and the money is in hands, basically. And it's not coming out of our operating budget, which is seeing shortfalls. It's just a marginal increase in the operating budget that is made up for by the savings. So I'm really glad to see that. I look forward to seeing those kind of arrears come down, right? So that we are, I've had, just at the beginning of COVID, you know, I had a couple of phone calls about people who still kind of write their own property tax check, you know, by hand and check and mail it in, who were concerned because they hadn't seen their check be cashed. But I, you know, it did, they did get to it and it hadn't been lost, but there was concerns from people that their, their payment's been lost. But more so that as our cash flow tightens, we're going to have to make sure we do everything on our end to make sure that revenue gets deposited as quickly as possible.
That's exactly right.
It's going to be a really, it's going to be a really important function. So thank you for being there and having been prepared, right? Because you put this in place, plan in place last year.
Yes, we did.
Yeah. So, and that was a good thing. So I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All say nay. Bill is recommended. Takes us to Bill 661.
Bill 661, Resolution Amending Resolution 738, which provided for a professional services agreement with NCR Corporation to provide citywide credit debit and e-check payment services for the collection of various program and permitting fees for the city by exercising the option to extend the term of the agreement for one year and no additional cost and updating the name of the vendor.
Motion to approve brief discussion.
Second.
So this one basically handles our, we moved a lot of our permitting and other fees to have the capability of accepting credit cards and debit cards and e-payments rather than having to pay with cash in person. And this really just extends the contract and the $30,000 implementation cost has already been expended. So there's no additional cost. So I have no questions. I just wanted to explain that to council and voice my support.
I have two questions.
Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. I just want to know, it's just an extension, why is there not an RFP going out and trying something new? Do we know that? Is there somebody here for that?
It seems as if Acting Director Gula would, or Assistant Director Gula would be able to answer that question as well.
Thank you. Is she here?
She's still here?
Do not see her.
Council President, would you like to hold for one week or would you like to help me? Would you like me to help you with that answer?
I would like to hold for one week.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Motion to hold for one week.
Second.
All those in favor of a one-week hold, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held one week. That takes us to our last committee, Intergovernmental Affairs chaired by Councilwoman Gross. We have one deferred paper, Bill 299.
Bill 299, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into a Project Corporation Agreement or Professional Services Agreement with Grounded Strategies for the Purposes of Implementing a City Farms Pilot Project in an Amount Not to Exceed $45,000.
Motion to approve a discussion.
Second.
So this is the aforementioned bill and I apologize again for it just continuing to lump along. But we're refining those asks that we can't be, get satisfied kind of either under current DPW staffing or under the current subcontractors that would be like the kind of remainder of the project, such as building compost bins or doing some of the maintenance work to assist in managing volunteers. As I mentioned last time, it is, it is going slowly. So I think last time I did a two-week hold and I'll, this time I'll motion to hold for three weeks. Thank you.
Second.
Favor of a three-week hold, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, will be held three weeks. That takes us to our last bill, Bill 658.
Bill 658, Resolution Adopting the Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Soil Facilities Plan for a Safe Place to Stay Project, which will involve interior and exterior renovations to the existing eight-story building located at 326 Third Avenue into office space on floors one through six and a rooming house on floors seven and eight for a safe place to stay program. The building address is 326 Third Avenue.
Motion to approve a discussion.
Second.
I'll just say that I love that this project and the bill title names a rooming house right in the title of the bill. I weirdly am enthusiastic about all rooming and boarding houses because I did half a doctoral dissertation on them back in the 1990s. So I'm, whose district is this in? I apologize, I'm not familiar with the project. It's downtown.
The same man, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Lavelle, would you indulge me and tell me a little bit more about the project or we can wait till offline?
Sure. No, I mean, it's a, it's on Third Avenue. It's already existing, well, the building's already there. Essentially what they're doing is built, is creating a space where anyone with drug issues or drug problems would be able to, they walk in or you could walk someone in with you to say, hey, I need a space to be able to get clean and sober and I need some assistance. They're designing it whereby on the top floors, you'll have your own sort of individual room. They won't ask any questions. They'll allow you to come in. But then after that, they'll be able to work with the families to determine whether or not you need to stay there long-term, whether or not you need to transition to a different facility. But essentially it gives you a place to get in off the street and provide a safe place for you.
Wonderful project. Thank you. I'll just add that many city historic neighborhoods, when you look at them, were actually filled with rooming houses and lodging houses from the 1880s to the early, 1800s, right? Like 1880s to the early 1900s. We experienced such massively, massive urbanization, so it's huge increases in population that it was the fastest way to kind of house people. And I think it's a great accommodation if we're trying to do a housing-first strategy where we realize as many other cities, the most important thing is to just help people get off the street. First thing that I really would love to see more of these kind of like single-room occupancy solutions that I think can be done well. They don't have to be a skid row. They don't have to be dangerous or dirty places. We can do this and house people with dignity, but it's a great accommodation for getting people off the street. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, the bill is approved, recommended. So that exhausts our agenda. We do have one meeting announcement that this evening at 6:00 PM, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 618, which is a petition relative to the installation of roundabouts on Reynolds Street, AKA the neighbor away. To register to speak at this hearing, please call the City Clerk's Office at 412-255-2138 by 4:00 PM today. You may also submit written testimony via email to cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Any other motions or thoughts from council? Madam President?
Just real briefly, I, we had last week the passing of Jean Fink, a school board member, and of Ralph Norman, who was our Sergeant at Arms for City Council years ago. They both passed away and I'd just like to make a mention of that and give a moment of silence for both of them.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else from members? Seeing none, we need a motion to excuse the absent member. Approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.